Order on July thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Foster.
Present.
Gross.
Here.
Nguyen.
Here.
Uh, Dodd's.
Here.
Goodrich.
Here.
Okay, all council members are present, as is the mayor, city clerk, city administrator, city attorney, and several staff in the audience. I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Gross, seconded by.
Second.
By Goodrich. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, then the agenda's approved. Okay, we have a one proclamation this evening regarding Parks and Recreation Month I'd like to read. Whereas Parks and Recreation programs are an integral part of communities throughout this country, including the city of Correville, and whereas our Parks and Recreation programs are vitally important to establishing and maintaining the quality of life in our community, ensuring the health of all citizens, and contributing to the economic and environmental well-being of a community and region. And whereas Parks and Recreation programs build healthy, active communities that aid in the prevention of chronic disease, improves mental and emotional health of all citizens, and ensures a variety of ways for citizens to interact and build positive lifelong leisure skills. Whereas Parks and Recreation programs increase a community's economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of the local tax base, increased tourism, and attraction and retention of business, and crime reduction. And whereas parks, wetlands, and woodlands areas are fundamental to the environmental well-being of our community, and whereas parks and natural recreational areas improve water quality, protect groundwater, prevent flooding, improve the quality of the air we breathe, provide vegetative buffers to development, and produce habitat for wildlife. And whereas our parks and natural recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community, and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors. Whereas the city of Correville recognizes the benefits derived from the Parks and Recreation resources, now therefore I, John A. Lundell, mayor, do hereby proclaim July two thousand and twenty as Parks and Recreation Month in Correville. Signed this thirteenth day of July, two thousand and twenty-one. And we have Sherry Proud, our director of the Parks and Recreation Department here to accept this proclamation. There you go. Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you, mayor. This is a proclamation that is read all over the nation for the month of July, with the National Recreation Park Association celebrating our local Parks and Recreation Networks that do so much for the community. I am thankful that, for your support from the council and from our administration, but also want to just give thanks for, for, to all of our part-time and full-time staff members. We celebrated on Friday with all of our staff with some Subway gift cards, and we distributed one hundred and ninety-seven cards, one for every employee that works for Parks and Rec, and along with a thank-you letter thanking them for their summer. We know they had a lot of opportunities this year. The wage, the market is incredibly competitive for, for employment, and encouraging them to continue on with us this fall, that we have lots of jobs available. And of course, anybody who wants to take lifeguarding, we encourage that too. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Sherry, and thanks to all your employees. Item five is citizen comments. This is a time on the agenda for anyone like to speak to us tonight about an item that's not already on the agenda. Okay, sure, go ahead. Please, sign, or state your name and sign in, please.
I'm Judy Clinton, and I live at nine forty-five Applewood Court in Correville. And I'd just like to thank the city of Correville for having done such a good job in the past with our farmers' markets. It was really a gathering place for the neighborhood, and having big trees meant that the air temperature was probably ten to fifteen degrees cooler than River Landing out on the street, on the concrete. And there was always a place to sit down. Parking was really very close to the vendors, so that when I had my arms full of watermelons, I didn't have to walk very far. And I think that year by year, it just was growing more neighborhood involvement. And actually, it was the first place that I met you guys when you were just getting onto the board. So, um, the trees, the temperature, places to sit, parking close to the vendors, handicap parking, um, and I think it was a place for neighbors who don't have cars to come to shop for essentials. I don't see those neighbors down at River Landing. Sometimes we would see three generations of a family shopping together and translating for each other. And, um, it was just nice to see that multicultural flavor of the neighborhood. I don't see those people down at River Landing. I don't even see my neighbors from Applewood at River Landing anymore. So, there's no shade, there's no place to sit, it's too hot on the highway, on the roadway, and the tents don't really help. And it's been so hot and so difficult for me to get up and down the hill, that it's hard to just hang out and meet the vendors, or see if any of my neighbors are there, but my neighbors are not there. So, the parking's not close by. Um, I don't think it's very wheelchair accessible. And I think accessible is just a good word, because right now, it's not very accessible to the neighbors that used to depend on that fresh food. You know, that's where they shopped, I think. So, that's my comments.
I appreciate you bringing that back, you know, to the forefront. We talked about this actually, just at our last meeting in our work session, those exact points. So, you just nailed every one of them on the head, and we need to address that. So, I appreciate you making the trip here to, to bring that to the forefront.
Well, I will continue to go. It's hard work for me, up and down that hill, but there are vendors that I want to support.
Sure. Well, we need to make it more accessible to more people, so.
Yeah.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks for, and I'm so glad that you're all in person. I've been doing Zoom with you all winter.
We are too.
Yes, sir.
How you guys doing?
Good.
Good.
I know a few of you guys from a real lot of guys' faces. My name's Rob Rogers. Give you a little bit about me, so you know where I'm standing with this. I moved to Correville in nineteen eighty-one, to get away from hustle-bustle big city. I raised five kids, three daughters, two sons. I enjoyed this area. Of the time I've been here, I only spent five years not living in Correville. So, Correville's my home. I love Correville.
Great.
And saying that, we put out, and I say we, because I'm part of Correville, I call you guys, an initiative for some housing on Fifth Avenue in Correville, seven eleven, seven thirteen, seven fifteen. Apparently, the city was buying that property, and they were going to take it and use it to help improve the area. It'll still be a mixture, from my understanding of owner-occupied, whatever, but to make the income, well, guys, we have one of our community members that fell through the cracks. The gentleman living in seven eleven was given a thirty-day notice. Let me give you a little background about him. Four and a half months ago, his wife had brain, had a brain surgery. She had a tumor in her brain, had surgery on her brain. He's got two little kids, twelve-year vet, seasonal employee with the city of Correville. All-around good guy, would give you his right arm. That's how him and I become, we were neighbors, and throughout the years, we became just like this, because he's just one of those guys. I don't know anything about this initiative, I want to do more research, but I need you guys' help. I'd like to see this information more transparent, because I don't understand how we could sell this property to somebody, and then they kick the person out in thirty days. Now, I do own rental property, I do own income property. I've been in this business for a long time. I don't want to tell my age, but my house, I lived in Iowa City, and the landlord was a great guy, and he had to sell it. And so what he did is that, the stipulation behind the pressure wanting the property is that I came with the property. As long as I didn't violate the lease, they couldn't kick me out. One of the reasons is because I paid my rent on time. Here we have this sack-sane gentleman, diligent, single father. He's actually, he's on disability too, and he's trying to work, and take care of a sick wife and two little bitty kids. He's now being put out on the streets. Thirty days. Guys, that's not any time to find a place. I've been there. He is now distraught. He comes to work every day stressed out. I need you guys' help. We need some ideas, and also, we need to look at this initiative and initiatives like this in the future. We can't do this. We can't sell stuff to people that's going to put our community at risk. I know for a fact, because I've dealt with people in real estate for the longest, if somebody wants to buy that house, they're going to buy it. You can put a stipulation in it to protect the person in there. And my worry is that this went through so fast, nobody paid attention to that. How did we allow this person to give them a thirty-day lease to a family? I need you guys' help. We got to look into this. We got to help him out. We have to, we, I'm talking about you guys, us, we have to help him out. We got to go above that. We got to step in and help this guy. He don't know what he's going to do. Twelve-year vet, Correville citizen. He's been there as long as I have. I've been on that block, oh my gosh, thirteen years.
Cool.
I've been on that block thirteen years. Beautiful area, beautiful people, great neighbors. That neighborhood is the ideal, what you guys want Correville neighborhood to be. It's a mixture of every culture known to man. We all know each other, we all speak, we all smile. Guys, help me. We got to help this guy, man. We can't let him get put out. We can't let him get displaced. He has two kids. He's been there nine years. His kids are in the school system. They're going to have to relocate. You guys know how hard it is to find a place around here now. Guys, we got to do something. I need your help. My buddy needs your help. And anytime you guys want to do something like this, I would be glad to be part of the system that helps put the checks in balance. Whatever you guys want to do, I'll be glad. People always say, I want you to do this. I'm telling you guys, I want to be part of this. Whatever you come up with, and if I come up with something, I want to be part of it. We can't let this happen again. And we got to start with my buddy.
Rob, be sure and write your, your name and your phone number down, so we can get ahold of you. And I'm going to ask the city manager's office to follow up with Rob about the specifics about this particular resident, and see what we can do, what the circumstances are.
There are many issues that we can't address publicly.
Right, exactly. So, we'll, you two can, can speak and, so, thank you, Rob. Thanks for bringing it to our attention.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Does anyone else would like to speak to us tonight? Okay, if not, we'll move on to item six, which is Hartland Drive pavement repair, two thousand and twenty-one, public hearing on the plan, specifications, estimate of cost, and form of contract for this project, which is for a three-inch overlay and full-depth pavement removal and replacement from Hartland Drive. I'd like to open the public hearing. Any comments on the plans and specs? Any written?
No, Rachel.
Okay. I'll close the public hearing and consider the resolution. Don?
Resolution approving the plan, specifications, estimate of cost, and form of contract, ordering bids, setting a date for the receiving of bids, and directing posting of the bid letting, all for the Hartland Drive pavement repair two thousand and twenty-one project, introduced for adoption by council member Foster, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Goodrich. Any discussion? Roll call.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Councilmember Foster.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Nguyen.
Aye.
Uh, Dodd's.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Resolution's approved, all ayes. Item seven, part of Lot Seven Folsom subdivision. This is the second consideration of an ordinance that will change the land use map for a property located on the southwest quadrant of Second Street and First Avenue from corridor commercial to mixed use.
Ordinance number two thousand and twenty-one dash ten-ten, an ordinance amending the Correville community plan to reflect certain property generally known as part of Lot Seven Folsom subdivision, Correville, Iowa, to be designated mixed use in place of corridor commercial use, introduced for adoption, second consideration by council member Gross, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Goodrich. Discussion?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, since I wasn't at the last meeting, that I did have some concerns about this. There was, you know, has been a tremendous amount of discussion about this area, and I'm glad to see that we are, you know, going to continue to have those discussions. I just want to make sure that, you know, future development in this area is inclusive, that it is truly affordable for both residential and commercial tenants. I want to make sure that we are not seeing some of the displacement issues in this area as we develop it. And this was, you know, isn't just what, what I'm hoping for. This was, you know, a lot of the feedback that we, we heard as we went through some community listening sessions several years ago during a project that was, that was being conducted kind of about this, this area. So, I'm glad to see, again, that we're going to be, you know, having a bit more discussion on this, to make sure that we aren't displacing the residents there. I will support this tonight, since the change in the designation is going to help the, the future development, so that we can, we can have a nice mixture of properties in the area. And I, I want to thank you all for your thoughtful discussion. I did read the notes from the meeting on the twenty-second, and I appreciate everybody's feedback on that.
Thank you.
Just so I'm clear, that, yeah, we're just voting, it's the ordinance, the zoning piece of what this is.
Land use.
Right, land use, yes.
Right, nothing about the actual use.
That's my understanding, just wanted to make sure, yep.
Okay. Anything else?
Yeah, so, on this, on the form, it said, "Concept development plan not require per city staff discussion." Does that mean that because we're only amending the land use, that why there's no?
Correct.
So that's why that box is not checked?
Yep, it's just the land use.
And then one more clarification for the properties owned by the Holes, Bessie Ho and Brian Holes. Those are the apartment complex across from the old pantry, correct?
Yes, there, there's housing there. I wouldn't know, I'd call it a complex, but yeah.
There's like housing, but they are rentals, units, rental unit. And so, once, will we have any, any sort of way to regulate as far as when the developer submit the development plan to ensure that those are not being displaced suddenly?
Um, I would doubt, I mean, we don't have a way specifically to keep that from happening. In fact, we've had two proposals to turn it all into just commercial, so, and they could legally do that under the zoning currently.
So can we, on that note, just, would the city be able to say, all right, so if that, if it's not residential, but then that whoever develops would pay a relocation fee for those, or?
Yeah, we don't have any kind of mechanism for doing that.
So, this will go back to the point where Mr. Roger made earlier, is that we have, we can't, we, we don't have any sort of.
Protection.
Protection at all, as far as developers go in and buy the, the land or the property and do whatever they want?
As long as they meet the zoning requirement.
So, should we then put in place in our ordinance to prevent that from happening?
Well.
Is that even legal?
Possible.
I don't know that it would be legal.
Can we put some stipulations within the, or at least in the planning process, that we, you know, do give at an adequate amount of time, and, and kind of build that into the entire, the entire process, to make sure that we aren't, because I had another question too, and I don't know if I'm getting ahead of myself, but I also saw further down in the agenda, in the workforce housing tax credits, that there are three hundred units for Brian Ho. And so I was wondering if that was, and again, I didn't want to jump ahead too far, but I just wanted clarification on that later.
And Kelly, I.
And this is a work session item, so I would suggest we defer.
Yeah.
I would suggest we defer a lot of the discussion.
Sure, yeah, yeah, that, that, yeah, but, yeah.
Mr. Murphy, I can just ask one question. Maybe, Don, you can answer this, since you're the, you're the lawyer in the house. So, if, if somebody signs a lease, is that lease, and then that property gets sold, does that lease, the terms of the lease transfer with the new buyer, or, or the terms of a lease null and void with the sale?
Generally, the lease is binding on the property as such, and if someone buys it, then they're subject to that lease, unless there's something contrary to that in the lease.
Sure, okay. No, thank you, I appreciate that.
That's a good point.
Are we ready to vote? Roll call, please.
Gross.
Aye.
Nguyen.
Aye.
Dodd's.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Okay, the ordinance passes at second consideration, all ayes. Item eight is the Construction Services Agreement. This is a resolution approving a, an agreement with Wagner Construction Services to build out the CLO space in the Iowa River Landing. Don?
Resolution approving a Construction Services Agreement with Wagner Construction Service, introduced for adoption by council member Nguyen, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Gross. Any discussion? Roll call.
Nguyen.
Aye.
Dodd's.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Resolution passes, all ayes. Item nine is the James Street Railroad Crossing. This is a proposal to enter into a study with Shoemaker-Holland, to study the feasibility of constructing a new railroad crossing on James Street at the south leg of the existing Highway Six and Lowe's signalized intersection. Don?
Resolution approving a proposal with Shoemaker-Holland Professional Engineers for the James Street Railroad Crossing Study, introduced for adoption by council member Dodd, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Nguyen. Any discussion?
Um, how soon will this take place, once it's been approved?
The study, or?
Yeah, the studies.
Well, the study could start immediately, and, you know, I would guess it'll be about a two-month time period.
So the, the timeline listed here, if they start already, it should, we should be able to base on that and move forward with that?
Roll call, please.
Uh, Dodd's.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Nguyen.
Aye.
Resolution passes, all ayes. Item ten is the Crandic Flood Protection Project Muscle Monitoring. This agreement provides for the final muscle monitoring event and report to satisfy the city's U.S. Army Corps of Engineers permit requirements for this flood protection project, and is not to exceed twenty-seven thousand dollars. I think this has been going on as long as I've been on the council.
It's a long time.
Yep.
It says two thousand and thirteen.
Okay.
That sounds about right.
That's when I was elected mayor. Don?
Resolution approving Consulting Services Agreement with Eco Analysis, Inc., for the final muscle monitoring report required for the Crandic Food Protection Project, introduced for adoption by council member Goodrich, seconded by.
Seconded, seconded by Gross. Discussion? Roll call.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Nguyen.
Aye.
Dodd's.
Aye.
Resolution passes, all ayes.
I thought Tony was going to give us some analysis on the muscles.
Delicious, but that's not what we're talking about tonight.
Wrong answer. Save the muscles.
Okay. Item eleven is, has A and B. They're both refinancing of bonds. The first one's for Brown Deer Golf Course, and the second is an issue for the Center for the Performing Arts. So, let's introduce the first resolution, then I'll ask Tony to explain a little further.
Resolution fixing a date of a meeting at which it is proposed to take action for entering into one or more amendments to a lease purchase agreement thereto in connection with the Brown Deer Golf Course, is introduced for adoption by council member Foster, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Nguyen. Now we have Tony Rotlin, our finance director, to explain a little further what this is.
So this item is the first step in this refinancing for the Brown Deer Golf Club, and, and so we will start the process on that one. The item B is the, a further step down the road on the CCPA refinancing, because we had that hearing some time ago already.
And it's fair to say these are both in pursuit of a more favorable financing terms?
Lower interest rates, saving interest dollars, and there's no new money in either one of these. It's simply a refinancing of existing bonds.
Right, this is saving us millions.
Yes. Yeah. Estimate right now is over a million and a quarter, in present value dollars.
Worth doing. Anything else for Tony on item A? Roll call, please.
Foster.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Nguyen.
Aye.
Dodd's.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Resolution passes, all ayes. Item B is, as Tony just said, pertains to the Center for Performing Arts. Don?
Resolution making a determination to issue annual appropriation tax increment revenue refunding bonds, setting perimeters for the state approving purchase agreements, official statements, and other related documents, and authorizing the call of outstanding bonds, introduced for adoption by council member Gross, seconded by.
Second.
Uh, I think it's seconded by Dodd's. Any discussion? Roll call.
Uh, Gross.
Aye.
Nguyen.
Aye.
Dodd's.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Resolution passes, all ayes. Moving on to item twelve, option agreements. This is an option for the IRL Parkview Investments LLC to purchase property for their development from the city for a sum of twelve dollars and fifty cents per square foot pursuant to a prior purchase agreement. This is necessary to qualify for workforce housing tax credit. Don?
Resolution approving an option agreement with IRL Parkview Investments LLC, introduced for adoption by council member Nguyen, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Goodrich. Discussion?
I just wondered if maybe Kelly, or, or Tony, or somebody could kind of discuss for the community what the housing tax credit is.
Sure. This is a state program that's been around for several years. They, if you spend two hundred thousand or less per unit for construction, then you can, can get a state tax credit. You have to apply. It used to be first come, first served, and now it is a competitive process. They were, there were so many of these tax credits out there that they were backlogged. Now, the legislature gave additional funding this year, so that the backlog was covered, and they have a little bit available in larger cities, and the small cities have even more, which we're not eligible for, but they have more money available for them. And so it's to go towards either, it could be rental or owner-occupied home, and it has to be a minimum of four units.
And we give them this money, how?
The state approves the tax credit.
Okay, not that we're just.
Right, yeah, the state is the one that goes through that application process.
And it's a thousand dollars per unit?
Right.
And is that a direct, that, that can come in a variety of forms, correct?
Yeah.
It can be, because in the, because.
A lot, a lot of times it's in lieu of, because there's other expenditures that the city covers, and that can include that.
Including like tax abatement?
Yep, yep, all those things.
Thank you.
Roll call?
Uh, Nguyen.
Aye.
Dodd's.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Resolution's approved, all ayes. Item B, similar concept with Sixth and Sixth Developers LLC, allows the developers to purchase a driveway that comes from the Highway Six to the back of the eight oh eight property for their development on the northwest corner of Sixth Avenue and Highway Six. Again, this is a necessary action. Again, this is a necessary action to qualify for workforce housing tax credit.
Resolution approving an option agreement with Sixth and Sixth Developers LLC, introduced for adoption by Councilmember Dodd, seconded by...
Second. Seconded by Gross. Any discussion on this one? Roll call.
Uh, Dodd's.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Nguyen.
Aye.
Resolutions approved all ayes. Item thirteen is workforce housing tax credits. Um, the first one's a resolution for a grant for North, Coral North Apartments at 2,500 Holiday Court with the city pledging in-kind support of $1,000 per residential unit for 49 units.
Resolution supportive application of Corville Housing Group Two LLC for funding via the workforce housing tax credit program and pledging city monies for the same, is introduced for adoption by Councilmember Goodrich, seconded by...
Second.
Seconded by Foster. Any discussion on this one?
So when you say in-kind support from the city, um, did, is there any stipulation that come with that, that support for this?
Um, there hasn't been, no.
But will, will, I, I guess will there be condition for that in kind of support, like, um, for affordable housing or anything like that, for unit that is 80% AMI with area of median income, or, or will just give them that money and they can choose to build whatever unit that they want?
Well, there's rules under the state, um, for the grant, which is the, where the $200,000 limit per unit for construction cost comes from. My, you know, and I, my assumption is, and I don't know this for a fact, my assumption is that the state is assuming if you're spending $200,000 or less, then that the rents are gonna be more affordable, and so that's why they call it workforce housing tax credits.
And there's a set of criteria that they have, I believe, that, that, um, that they look at when they score the applications. And some of those criteria include things like vacancy rates, they include things like market rate and things like that.
Yeah, they've got, um, a whole series of those things, and, um, they give preference to cities where housing is, um, um, more in demand, and that would be the vacancy rate and availability rate, um, which is very low in our particular area. But I can't say that, I mean, most of Iowa, it's, uh, most places are going to be eligible under that criteria because of the need for housing.
Is it just 49 unit, uh, Kelly, for that area, for that, uh, 2,500, um, Holiday Court, or it's just the 49 unit that the city have the in-kind support?
I think it's a total of 49 units.
It's a total of 49, yep.
Okay, thanks.
It's the same group that built the apartments on Lantern, the old Lantern Park Care Center.
Thank you.
Item B, um, no, did we have, did we do roll call? No, we need roll call on that.
Uh, Foster.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Uh, Nguyen.
Aye.
Dodd's.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Resolutions approved all ayes. Now on to item B, um, similar, um, issue. This one is with the Town Center One on Tenth Avenue, just north of West Bank, um, again with the city pledging $1,000 per residential unit for a total of 80 units.
Resolution of support of the application of BBCO LLC for funding via workforce housing tax credit program and pledging city monies for the same, introduced for adoption by Councilmember Foster, seconded by...
Second.
Seconded by Goodrich. Discussion?
Well, I'd just like to say I'm just so grateful to the, um, city employees who are on top of this, and, I mean, this workforce housing tax credit just became available, and we're already getting, uh, all the paperwork done and so on for the funding. So thank you, Kelly and Ellen and, um, others who have really helped, um, to make this available for our town. And the deadline is fast approaching.
Yeah.
July nineteenth, yeah, yeah.
But I do remind people, it is competitive now, so the chances of getting all these are probably not very good, but, um, if anybody read the Des Moines Register, I believe it was yesterday, there was a story about, I think they had six applications just from the city of Des Moines irrespective of all the suburbs, so it's a very, gonna be a very competitive, it is a very competitive program.
Do you think COVID make it way more competitive now than before?
I don't think so. It's always, that's why there was such a huge backlog, was because the, there's such a demand for that, and we've had 900 units built in Corville using workforce housing tax credit, so that's a significant, most of 808 buildings, um, were an example of that. The, um, Old Lantern Park, the building on, um, the Old Lantern Park site's another example. So we've had quite a few that have been funded, but that was when it was...
There's just a demand for that price point, I think.
Right, and that's when it was a first cup, first serve program, and so, uh, but it, they did, legislature did allocate more funds, so next year, now that the backlog is gone, will be even better because there'll be more funds available.
Be a tough job deciding which ones to, to fund.
Yeah, yeah, it really will.
That rubric better be good, uh, figure out that.
Uh, roll call, please.
Uh, Gross.
Aye.
Nguyen.
Aye.
Dodd's.
Aye.
Aye.
Goodrich. Foster.
Aye.
Resolution passes all ayes. Um, we have three more of these to go. Item C, same thing for the, um, IRL Parkview Two in the Iowa River Landing, uh, for, uh, up to 68 units.
Resolution of support of the application of IRL Parkview Investments LLC for funding via the workforce housing tax credit program and pledging city monies for the same, introduced for adoption by Councilmember Gross, seconded by...
Second.
Seconded by Dodd's. Any discussion?
Um, I just thought of, um, something in relation to a question from the last time. I know three of these, um, have been on plans for some time. All three of them have significant increased costs because of the price of lumber, and so that is a significant reason, or a reason that a lot of these are very interested in this program is to help offset those costs. For example, I know the developer of the first one, Holiday Court, indicated theirs was over a million dollars increased cost. Um, the item B, um, the one that was next to West Bank, I, I don't know its exact dollars other than it's, um, it was close to that same amount. And then the one, um, Parkview is way over a million. It's like a million and a half dollars just in additional, um, material cost. So that's what's not only driving the needs for this, but it's also driving housing costs because they're trying, they're trying to offset those.
If this doesn't get awarded to specific programs, they may need to increase the cost to make up their...
Oh, yeah. Either that or they won't do them. A couple of them have talked about not awaiting and seeing if the prices come down.
Roll call, please.
Nguyen.
Aye.
Dodd's.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Resolutions approved all ayes. We're on, I think we're on to D. Uh, same thing, uh, for the Sixth and Sixth Phase One on the northwest corner of Sixth Avenue and Highway six for 100 units.
Resolution of support of the application of Sixth and Sixth Developers LLC for funding via the workforce housing tax credit program and pledging city monies for the same, introduced for adoption by Councilmember Nguyen, seconded by...
Second.
Seconded by Gross. Discussion? Roll call.
Dodd's.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Nguyen.
Aye.
Resolution passes all ayes. Okay, the last one, item E, um, same thing for a housing project located on south of U.S. Highway six, west of First Avenue, and east of Clear Creek, with the city pledging, um, $3,000 as per the other ones, for up to 300 units, and this is the, the Southeast Commercial District project.
Resolution of support of the application of Rail Development Corporation, RDC, Fund Thirteen Investments LLC for funding via the workforce housing tax credit program and pledging city monies for the same, introduced for adoption by Councilmember Dodd, seconded by...
Second.
Seconded by Goodrich. Discussion?
Yeah, uh, Mayor, this one should be amended to 185 units because 300 would be the total of, which would be multiple phases. So just like the prior one, this particular program would be only the 185 units.
So if, so if these are for housing units, and, I mean, so is there, are, is that just to rehave the existing units to put new ones in, or...
No, this would be for new housing.
Okay.
Construction.
So if, through our discussions, um, well, I guess the, the first thing would be just to apply to see if we would even get awarded the tax credits.
They, yeah, whether they would get...
Yeah, yes. Uh, or that, yeah, that they, whether they would get awarded the tax credits. Um, so if we, if we, if the project receives the tax credits and, you know, as we have our discussions, we are, you know, we want to move a different direction with, um, with the, the development, would we then still have the flexibility to, or would the developers still have the flexibility to use those credits?
I would assume that that, they would have to apply for an amendment because it's would, I guess you don't have to turn in a plan, so it'd be as long as they're only doing 185 units.
So, um, I guess, who, who moved and seconded that, Mr. Clerk?
Um, Dodd's, Goodrich.
Okay.
Dodd's and Goodrich.
Okay, are you two, um, okay, amending it to 185 from 300?
So moved, Mayor.
Okay, okay. So resolution that's been modified to 185 units. Uh, roll call.
Yes.
Dodd's.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Nguyen.
Aye.
Okay, resolution passes all ayes. We're down to item 14, I would consider a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented or amended.
Mayor, I would ask the council to consider a motion to approve the consent calendar A through double E inclusive.
Okay, moved by Dodd, seconded by...
Second.
By Gross. Any discussion on these?
Well, did we get the final, um, the well casting? Um, we didn't get an, a number there. Of the bid, yeah. We...
Oh, um, item double A, the change order.
Yeah, the change order.
That was the recasing.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Change order with no, no dollar.
I never heard that. Do more of that. Okay, thank you, yeah, good.
Roll call?
Uh, Goodrich.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Nguyen.
Aye.
Dodd's.
Aye.
Resolution is, or, excuse me, the consent calendar is approved, all ayes. City administrators report.
Um, yes, uh, just a couple of quick things. First, I'd just like to thank all of the committee members that put on Fourth Fest. We had such great response from the community and people participating in all three days events, and, um, they work year round to try to plan for, um, the Fourth Fest, and they're working towards our 150th, um, sesquicentennial celebration, which will be in two years. And so just like to thank them for their efforts and all the people that participated. And then, um, I did get a chance today to visit the Iowa River Trail Connection that's completed. It is open, and so would encourage people to, um, go and see that and use it. Uh, there were a lot of people on the trail, um, over the lunch hour today, and I talked to several of them, and they were so excited to have it open because they, a couple of them have typically used, um, Highway six, and they just said they feel so much safer without all the driveways that they have to cross, plus it's, um, a lot more attractive. So just, um, encourage people to go out, and there will be a ribbon cutting, um, coming up, um, in August, but, um, encourage people to go out and see that completed project. That's it, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Kelly. Um, Mayor's report, uh, I was also had on my list to also bring up Fourth Fest because it was a, a huge success, but it wasn't a success without a huge amount of, uh, help and assistance by many volunteers, city and community alike, and donations by businesses. As I always like to say, the, the concert's free, the fireworks are free to the public, they're not free to us. We have to pay for that, and we do it through donations, so we appreciate the, the contributions throughout the year to that. So we put the Fourth Fest to best, to bed, now we gotta look ahead, what's next? It's not Fry Fest, there's one before that. It's the Fifth Street Social, and that's, uh, becoming a, a great tradition. I don't know what, I'm guessing it's about five years or so? Four?
One Street Dance, four Fifth Street Socials.
Okay, so, four and a half. And that's coming up August 14th, so just for, um, council and public alike to, to note that on August 14th, always a good time. And, um, the, uh, I'll, you'll get tired of me mentioning this, but I do want to just make sure the council remembers that the League of Cities is gonna be here, the 15th to the 17th of September, and as the host city, um, there is an expectation that we all will be there to help out, represent our city well, and, and do, um, it's just a, a lot as a host city that has to be done, and, and, um, we wanna, we wanna look our best, so. City Attorney's Report, Don?
I have nothing to add, thank you.
Nothing to add, okay. Uh, Committee and Council Members' Report. Oh, I, I have no particular order here. I'll, I'll, I'll break it up, we'll go with Hi, then I'm gonna go back and forth, just so you know.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So today I was super excited to join my colleague at the Corville Community Food Pantry as we reopen our doors for in-person service for the first time in 17 months. You know, when we first talk about reshifting the way that we offer our services to the community due to COVID, we're thinking maybe a month, max. A year, and we still doing it, and today it's, it has been 17 months, uh, since we changed, um, that service, and we are, was so excited to open for in, in-person service back up. And I was grateful to see, um, the mayor, Kelly, and member of the council there to celebrate this new milestone with us. And I was noticed today, we are not celebrating the end of the, the pandemic. We all know that we are still very much in the middle of the pandemic. Um, this crisis is still alive and well. So for many families, life is only going to get harder. Um, I'm hopeful that we will not go back to normal, but build a future that is safer and more just for everyone in our community. And that starts with us, here. As a council, making decision to prioritize American Rescue Plan Funds to first help our most vulnerable neighbor who fell through the crap in the last year. Um, I look forward to conversation with my colleagues as well as city staff and administrator, um, and hearing directly from the, the public to develop a plan for how we can use the light of $3 million to truly provide the most impact in our community, right here in Corville. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, hi. Okay, we're going to flip down to Councilman Gross.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And sorry I was not able to come today, but I, I heard it was great. And you just think about the food pantry and just the, I mean, I think, I think this council has demonstrated its commitment in a lot of ways to that. I mean, I was on the original founding board, I know Jill has played a big role, and then, you know, you two are on the board right now. So I think that's been well represented by our city and where our commitment is. So I, and I would have never thought, when we founded this thing back in 2006 or '07, that would have been where it is. And I mean, it's just, it's been crazy. Couple of things I want to say. First, I do, I do want to say to Ms. Clinton and Mr. Rogers, thank you so much for coming. We appreciate the comments, and it is nice to be back in the chamber to hear from constituents. And Mr. Rogers, I'm not sure if you're related, Charlie Rogers, but he was a former student of mine, so I'm not sure if that's related at all, but, but appreciate that. We'll definitely always listen to what you guys have to say and try to get back to you with, with the response. I'd also want to dovetail what the mayor said. For me, the best part of Fourth Fest was the community meal. And I want to give a huge shout out to Chief Crone and Chief Schweitzer for having their folks help and, and put that on because I just thought that was, I mean, we literally served thousands at that time, and I thought people were really pleased and happy, and it just, I thought it was a great kickoff. So thank you, Chief, for your role in that as well, Chief Schweitzer. Third, from my library world, coming soon will be a new app, the Corville Library App, and it's going to be, I would argue, life-changing. You'll be able to check out books with your phone, a whole bunch of cool things. So be watching for communication regarding that. Lastly, and I don't, if you're, I guess you've already talked, Mayor, but I also want to give a huge shout out to Genesis Church. The mayor and I received, as they do every year, a pretty significant check that they write to the fire department every year as, and, you know, these are their words. You know, as a church, they don't pay property taxes, but they want to make sure they give a significant contribution back to our city. So we appreciate the great folks at Genesis Church for doing that. And finally, I just want to give a little shout out and memory of Dr. Martin Sokol, who passed away maybe 10 days ago or so in Corville. And I'd first met Marty, he's a parishioner, fellow parishioner of mine at St. Thomas More, but also was really leading the fight for LGBTQ+ rights before some of those acronyms were even in that phrase. And Marty was a huge push to get an Iowa City Pride Fest, and fortunately he won't be here, as Corville has its first Pride Fest, which I think is the first week of September. I don't have the date off the top of my head, but I think that's in the IRL too, but I just wanted to.
September 7th.
September 7th, thank you, Mayor. And just to say, appreciate and condolences to the Sokol family. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mitch, for mentioning Genesis Church. I, I failed to remember that, so I appreciate that.
That's why they pay the mayor pro temp big bucks.
Okay, keep me on my toes. Councilmember Dodd?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to revert a year back to my speech about COVID. It's that time again because we need to be very careful of the variant that's out there. If you have not been vaccinated, please do so. I was absolutely stunned to find out that Iowa is less than 50%. I thought that we were a little smarter than that. So I hope that everyone can go out and get vaccinated, which also leads me to give another kudos to the food pantry, which is one of my favorite places. Not only do they feed our hungry, they help vaccinate our community. So, I mean, they are a full one-stop shop, and congratulations on being open. I wish I could have been there today, as you can all imagine, so that's all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Jill. Flip, flip to Councilmember Foster.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have much to add. Just also really grateful to be back in person at Fourth Fest. I'd forgotten how much I enjoy that event, being out in the community. The fireworks were amazing. One of my favorite things to do over the weekend is, is donate it, or collecting the donations. We did get a lot of requests for Venmo transactions as we were going around with the bucket. Many requests for people to have the option to donate online. As much as I love the, the, the bucket part of it, going and actually talking to people, the mayor and I actually spoke with someone from Boise, Idaho. That was, they were riding their bike across the country, and they just stopped off here because they had heard that our fireworks were, were worth seeing. So, I love that, but I think, I think we could get even more donations if we, if we did have that online option. Also wanted to thank Chief Crone, Chief Schweitzer, Lori, all the police and fire, everyone that helped organize that community meal. It, I think, you know, everybody was so pleased, and it was great to see the turnout, just to kind of celebrate all of us being back together again for, for the 4th of July. And then, aside from that, I wanted to mention the wage theft resolution again. I mentioned that at our first in-person meeting. I, I'd love to get a timeframe on when we can get that on the agenda to talk about. And then Councilmember Dodd's had also mentioned hate crime ordinance a couple months ago. I'd, I'd like to get a timeframe for when we can get that on the agenda as well. And that is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Goodrich?
Yeah, I'll just wrap it up with, thanks, everyone, employees and volunteers for the great Fourth Fest, three days of non-stop activities. And I enjoyed being at the reopening. I was able to be there with, at the food pantry with my daughter-in-law. And I look forward to being involved in the Fifth Street Social, and will all be there at the Iowa League of Cities. So, thank you, Mayor, look forward to the next month.
Okay, great. I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Okay, moved and seconded, down that end of the table. All in favor, say a hi.
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 Okay.